Okay, welcome. I'm gonna go ahead and call the June 27, 2024 meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council to order. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer is absent. Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa.
Present.
And Mayor Daniels.
Here. Next item, please.
Next item is the flag salute.
Please stand and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, July 1st at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at the city's YouTube channel.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Any items and issues? If not, take a motion.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Middleton and seconded by Councilmember Lopez Taft. Any comments or questions regarding the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment. And if you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each. The mayor has the discretion to reduce the allotted time. We have a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time, also consistent with the Brown Act. The council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda. And we do have a few speaker cards, and I do have one written comment for this portion of the public comment.
I'm gonna go ahead and have you read the written comment, otherwise I'll forget.
So, this item is from Rick Hodgkins, and he states, "About four days ago, back on Sunday, if you recall, there was an accident on Sunrise Boulevard and Twin Oaks Drive, where somebody had the nerve to crash into a telephone pole, which in turn knocked over an electric pole, which in turn left us without power for some time after 4:00 p.m. till shortly before 10:00 p.m. Do we need to consistently, constantly, and continuously remind people Sunrise Boulevard is not a freeway or a highway? See you all at the next city scoop in two weeks." And that concludes his comments.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have a few speaker sheets. I'm gonna first call up Alexander Hampton.
Good evening, council. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Alexander Hampton. I'm a field representative for the North Kyle Carpenters out of Local 46 here in Sacramento. This evening, I'm going to address some worries about the hard-working men and women who are going to be building projects in Citrus Heights. Thirty-one percent of construction workers lack health insurance. That's nearly three times the rate of all workers. We have seen the devastation from COVID-19 and have caused and seen how much importance healthcare is for everyone. These workers should not be excluded from that. To help eliminate this problem, we need to make sure that prevailing wage, healthcare, apprenticeship, compliance, and local hire are required on housing projects built in Citrus Heights. As leaders of this community, what are you gonna do to work towards this goal, to make sure that this doesn't happen to the workers anymore, and they deserve better? And I wanna share a story that's really, you know, close to my heart. I grew up here in Sacramento, in South Sac. I live in North Highlands right now. But in 1987, I was in high school lifting weights, and I passed out, and I had what's called an aneurysm. Went to a coma, had to learn how to read, write, walk all over again. 2008, I became apprentice for the Local 46 Carpenters. And my very first job that I was getting was a very special one. In a carpenters' union, you have two things. When you sign up as a carpenter, you get on a ready-to-work list to where, you know, a contractor can call you and you go to work, or you have the opportunity to search for work on your own. Well, the first job that I landed as an apprentice was at this very same hospital that saved my life, Methodist Hospital. A lot of people don't understand the importance of what the carpenters' union is all about. It's about changing lives. Most won't have a story like myself, but when they build a project, they will see that project for the rest of their lives, and they appreciate what they've accomplished. I just wanna say thank you very much this evening for letting me speak, and take care. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up will be John Kane.
Honorable Mayor.
Hi, John.
City staff. Esteemed councilmembers, I come in response to a letter sent to me that says, "When I went to the NUSA Conference that you also lovingly and willingly sent me to, as a condition of approval, you must present an overview of the conference experience to the city council, including ideas presented that could be implemented within the community, and submit a final expense report." And I am here to tell you that I have done those things. I have submitted the final expense report with receipts. It was a great time. It was an interesting time, and I really am at a disadvantage because I have three adult children at my house right now. And I went to print my notes for what I'm gonna say tonight, and two of them were locked in the room with the printer. And they were taking tests, so I have to go off of my scrap notes, okay? So, the overview. I attended four workshops and a bus tour of the city. The workshop number one was Long Beach Homeless Court. It was given by a deputy district attorney and a social worker. It dealt with homeless, unsheltered, whatever word you wanna use to describe these people. We are all heartbroken that there are so many people living on the streets without a roof over their head. It was quite interesting what Long Beach is doing, and it's a much bigger city with a much bigger budget than we have with streets. They showed pictures, block after block after block after block of RVs parked. It was quite interesting, and they have a homeless court once a month. I don't know what I can get from that, except to tell you that one of my favorite things in the conference was talking to people between, before, and after workshops, and getting ideas. And believe it or not, there are cities with virtually no homeless transient migrant populations. They've solved the problem. Quite interesting how they've done it. I attended a workshop, created neighborhood connections with volunteer and law enforcement working together. That was fantastic. Two law enforcement officers. The number-one thing I took away from that is the value of people that live in a city, and they had people there that do this. They create a volunteer task force that works with the police department to take some of the non-crime loads off the police department. They're patrolling the streets, they're finding things. They're not patrolling like officers, they're just observing. And they're kinda eyes on the streets. And I talked to one of the officers after. He gave me about a half an hour of his time. It was just fantastic what we, as citizens, can do for our police department with funding issues and budget issues and the kinds of things that they deal with that are non-crime-related or non-life-threatening related, and how these volunteers help take that load off law enforcement. I attended Lending Your Faith Community to Love Where They Live. It was really interesting how to, basically, they told us, "We can use the skillsets of people in our community to help our community." And the guy that I was paired up with, his skillset was etiquette. And it was quite fun working with him. How do you set your table? Which knife do you use? When you're done eating, what do you do with your utensils at a fine restaurant? It was fun. Probably one of the high points was a neighborhood pride tour. Three hours on a city bus, dinner provided. So, 300, according to the conference, 320 people registered, 275 attended. I was on the bus that got the best meal. We got real south barbecue. It was catered. We went to a church, we sat in a fellowship hall, and some of the other people, they got to where they were supposed to eat, and their pizza didn't show up.
Yeah.
And they had to go back to the conference center, and the pizza didn't show up there. And they said, "Oh, we put the pizza at where you're supposed to eat." That was three busloads of people. So, two quick things, I'm out of time.
John, you can have a little more.
No, no. I'll go through.
You're giving a report, so it's fine.
So, two surprising things. I met one of the original, most of you know Warren Buffett. I sat next to a lady that has met Warren Buffett, lives in Omaha, Nebraska. She worked as a AAA operator. She is an original shareholder of Berkshire Hathaway A., which is selling today for $615,000 a share. We had the laugh of a lifetime eating our barbecue together. And she's about 75 years old. Great time. Finally, I went to the workshop, "Congrations as Connectors," a new role for a new time, essentially talking about how cities, neighborhoods can interact with churches and faith communities to just strengthen community. The number-one thing that I got, that I think I wish I had known much, much sooner, is the value of being involved in your community, knowing the staff, knowing the council members, knowing your neighbors, and the difference that that can make in a city. Because I talked to people for hours. I sat on buses, I sat at lunch with them, I walked hallways with them, and I met a lot of people that really love their city, they love their street, they love their community, they love their houses on their street, and they want only the best. And that was probably the number-one thing, is the value, and I hope I can contribute to that in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I'm really glad you went, John.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for...
Money well spent, right?
Money well spent.
Okay, next up is Elijah Wilbur.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Elijah Wilbur, and I'm very excited to announce that I'm the newly-elected president of the Citrus Heights Northwest Neighborhood Area, otherwise known as Area 1. As many of you know, Area 1 has experienced a mix of activity and inactivity. In February of this year, the city hosted a unique and engaging workshop aimed at our community leaders to develop a road map that would foster greater engagement with our neighborhood areas. This workshop made it very evident that our city and community leaders wanted to see Area 1 active and thriving. In March of this year, I was appointed by the Residents Empowerment Association of Citrus Heights as the interim president of Area 1 to get the ball rolling in reactivating the strong sense of community that exists in our area. Since March, Area 1 has held four meetings at Sammy's Restaurant and Bar, partnered with the Antelope Lions Club to celebrate a standout student at Lykan K-8, engaged the Lykan K-8 families, students, and staff at their annual cultural fair, received insightful and educational presentations from our Citrus Heights Police Department and City Departments, and at our June meeting, we elected our officers and established new bylaws for the neighborhood area. So, we've been very busy since we started. I'm excited for the remaining year ahead and wanted to make sure that you all knew, as well as the community, knew that you are all invited to our next future neighborhood area meetings. And all of our meetings are every third Monday at Sammy's Restaurant and Bar inside of Stones. So, I look forward to seeing you there, and thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, and congratulations. Okay, I think that's it on the public comments. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. I don't know about you guys, but I've been settling in with having my kids home on summer break. Please watch out for the children in the streets. They're just, they're out there around the Starbucks, just, I don't know what they're doing. I don't know where they're getting the Starbucks money from, but that's their business. But other than that, on the 17th, I was able to fill in for the mayor for Mondays with the mayor. Thank you all to the folks that came out and spoke with us and gave us your concerns. It was really interesting, Mayor. It was a really lively experience, so thank you for that. On June 19th, I attended no less than six Juneteenth celebrations throughout the Sacramento region. It was so great to see how communities can come together and just really celebrate the things that we hold true to ourselves when it comes to our Constitution and freedom. And on the 20th, we had a very lively Metro Cable meeting where we celebrated some retirements, we talked more about our budget, and we're actually gonna add a few more meetings into our upcoming schedule in the fall. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Happy summer, everyone. Everyone else, it seems like, is celebrating summer, but we are going full and strong. Because many of my groups are on summer hiatus, I have only attended one meeting recently, but it was one that was important to me, and that was the Single Moms Strong five-year anniversary on the 15th. And so, for those of you who don't know, we have a wonderful organization called Single Moms Strong, who serves single moms in the community, and they have a very, very low-cost, affordable childcare program and a business career closet for the moms. And so, they have so many programs there, always taking referrals of a single mom that you wanna take care of. And they don't have any income requirements for participating in their childcare program. That's it.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa.
Thank you, Mayor. Like Mary Jane says, summertime, a lot of people are off, and we don't have to go to so many meetings, but I did go to, the worst is the mosquitoes. They are out all summer, so we don't cancel our summer meetings. We've had some positive West Nile mosquitoes, mostly in the southern part of the county, so there's not yet in Citrus Heights. If you find a dead bird, there is a fightthebite.net. You can go online and report the dead bird. We'll come and get it, and then we'll let you know what the results are. Meanwhile, fightthebite.net, you can report green swimming pools that are, you know, maybe abandoned or not being maintained correctly to the department. Do not put bleach in them, because they may have mosquito fish already in them, and you would be killing the nice mosquito fish. So, we do is put some fish in those green ponds, and hopefully, the people who own these green ponds will clean them up. So, report green swimming pools, dead birds, fightthebite.net, lots of information, and that's that. I also went, on a happy note, to the Vet Center on Sylvan Road, had a spaghetti fundraiser, and the city manager attended, and Tim attended, and we had a good time, eating spaghetti, winning raffle prizes. I won a wonderful raffle prize constructed by our General Services Director, Regina Planter. Absolutely beautiful, Regina. Thank you so much. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. And in keeping with everybody else, very light, a couple of weeks. I forgot to mention last meeting that I had attended a get-together that happens every Monday at the Oasis Center, and I'm up here just killing myself because I can't remember the church that's right next door that, what is it? Living Waters. Thank you, thank you. That's why we have a good city manager here, Living Water Church. And it's on Lape Lane, right near Mesa Verde High School, and they get together every Monday from, I think it's 12 to 2, 12 to 3, something like that. And it's a resource center for our homeless folks and low-income folks, people just need some help. And so, it's a place that you can take things, clothing, food. I wanna do a little shout-out to Olive Garden that provides a lunch for them, and it was a great atmosphere. And so, it's an opportunity to maybe get to know some folks in a way that is a little different from how we feel when we see folks just on the street. And I encourage you to go out there and just say hello, and maybe find a way that maybe you can help somebody. I also then went, a couple of days ago, to a premiere of a documentary movie that was put up, was created about an effort that's called Love Laundry or Laundry Love. I can't remember which one, but it's the story about a, it's actually a national organization with local chapters, and what they do is they find a way to come together and provide laundry facilities and laundry, and free laundry facilities for, again, homeless or low-income folks that they can come to on a specific day, and they get to do their laundry for free and restore their dignity also. And so, it's a good thing, and they searched for quite a while, almost a year and a half, I think it was, to find a local facility that would let them do that, and that is the Laundromat on Greenback Lane at San Juan next to Safeway. And again, my poor memory doesn't allow me to remember the name of that facility, but they come together and they provide the funds necessary for these folks to get their laundry done. And so, it's the second Saturday of every month. If it's something that you need help with, you know, head-on down, and if it's something that, again, you're looking for a way to help people out, it's a great way to donate. It's a 501(c)(3), and so, very well organized, extremely well organized. And again, it's a very positive thing for folks that, you know, need to help with their dignity and stuff like that. And I think that's all I have. So, let's go to the next item.
The next item is consent calendar items four through 14.
Okay, anybody want to pull anything from the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion on that.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Lopez Taft. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Let me just say something real quick to the folks out there that, on the consent calendar, we had a lot of items this week, and they're mainly, we do it on a consent calendar because there are things that aren't really going to have much discussion necessary to them and whatnot. But I do wanna just kinda point out some of the things that your city is doing. On there, we approve things for bridge maintenance, on-call fence repair, vegetation management, stormwater quality, citywide crack ceiling, and so, a lot of things are going on, and I encourage you, if you want to, to take a look at the agenda to know these things that your city is doing. All right, next item. Usually good for a laugh. Tell us something funny. Not gonna do it, huh? I don't know, we have a technical malfunction, I believe, we're working on.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there was a, one of the items in the consent calendar included some information about executive salaries. There's a government code section that says you need to make an oral statement about it. So, I wanna go back and take that item, but I need to get the specific language pulled out. I think it's okay for the council to move forward the rest of the meeting, but at some point, if you don't mind, I'm gonna come back and we'll redo that, one particular item.
Does that come up at the end with the budget resolution?
We can do it at that point, but no, it's already, it was already part of one of the actual items on consent.
Okay, very good, very good.
Mr. Mayor, maybe if we can just take a five-minute recess after the hotel item, we'll be able to get that material together.
Okay, very good. All right. Gonna go to the next item.
The next item is public hearing, item number 15. The subject is Sunrise Tomorrow Hotel Parcel Map and Development Agreement. The recommendation is to, there's three motions to consider. Move to determine the previously adopted Sunrise Tomorrow Specific Plan EIR is the appropriate environmental document for this project, and no further review is required. Move to approve a tentative parcel map to allow the division of an existing 2.8-acre parcel into three parcels, 1.48 acres, 0.93 acres, and 0.38 acres in size, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the staff report. And move to introduce for first reading, read by title only, and waive the full reading of an ordinance approving and adopting the Sunrise Tomorrow Hotel Development Agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Casey Kempner, your Community Development Director. Pleasure to be here tonight to go over this project with you. It's an exciting project, and we're excited to be here. So, the Planning Commission reviewed this last month and recommends city council adopt the tentative parcel map, approve the tentative parcel map, adopt an ordinance, approve a development agreement, and then determine this EIR is appropriate environmental review. So, as the council is well aware, a couple of years ago, the city prepared the Sunrise Tomorrow Specific Plan to guide the intensification, diversification of that site, to really focus it on the place where people gather for the city and really revitalize that site. Part of that effort is bringing different uses that don't exist in the city. So, part of that included identifying several hotels on the site and different uses, residential and so forth, that don't exist currently. So, in order to facilitate that, one of our applicant here today is wanting to subdivide their parcel into three lots, one for a future hotel, one would be the existing US Bank parcel, and another would be for the retail and restaurant pad. As you can see here, this is the northwest corner of the site. You can see the US Bank is prominently shown there. It's about 2.8 acres, shown in red, and the dotted lines represent the parcels. So, one larger parcel on the east, which would be for the hotel, the existing US Bank, and then a smaller parcel for a future retail or restaurant pad. This is just a snip from the tentative parcel map showing the tentative map, as well as the potential footprint for a hotel. The hotel would accommodate 110, 120 rooms, and then you can see a sample footprint of a retail and restaurant building on the bottom in parcel B. As I mentioned, this was contemplated specifically as part of the specific plan for Sunrise Tomorrow to bring a hotel to this exact location. You can see here on this image, north is to the left, but you can see there's a hotel shown in the conceptual image that was proposed for the specific plan, so you can see it aligns with the Sunrise Tomorrow Specific Plan, as well as the smaller building to the west. The only difference in this case is the bank's proposed to remain, and the bank can stay there indefinitely as well. The project also includes a development agreement, and for those of you that aren't necessarily familiar with the development agreement, what that is, is an agreement between the city and the developer, and really, that's intended to provide some certainty to both the city and the developer about what is delivered in the future. So, the advantage to us is to ensure that the hotel meets the council's expectations and some parameters in that regard, as well as some of the improvement requirements and so forth. The advantage for the developer is it gives him a longer lead time to adhere to the development agreement and also, and gives them some certainty for that the development can occur. So, there is a future process that would occur. The next steps, if approved tonight, would be a designer review permit for the hotel. That is memorialized, as well as the zoning code is also memorialized in this development agreement. Development agreement also highlights some of the public improvements and the timing of such, requires participation in a future infrastructure financing district, if that's something that's created, provides adequate right-of-way to provide future roads and future infrastructure needed, and calls for some infrastructure upgrades in the future. As I mentioned, it also provides operating standards for a future at least 110-room hotel, requires it's at least a three-star or three diamond minimum. It offers a streamlined approval process where it would only go to the Planning Commission if it is on the list of pre-approved brands. If it wasn't on a list, it would go to the council. And also requires that, once a hotel is constructed, it has to maintain a hotel, meaning specific operating characteristics for a minimum of 25 years. From a CQ perspective, as mentioned, the project is consistent with the Sunrise Tomorrow EIR, and it's consistent with the general parameters of the minor land division in that it's four or fewer parcels. It's consistent with the specific plan and the general plan. There's no special exceptions or variances, and it hasn't been part of a subdivision in the last two years. It also has a really important strategic impact on the city. We've had a longstanding focus on diversifying our economy from a really heavily-focused retail economy to something that is a little bit more diverse. And so, hotels do generate TOT tax. We estimate that this hotel room would, this hotel would generate about half a million in TOT tax annually once it's up and running. It does serve a need. There's currently a gap in the region in Citrus Heights for hotels available for residents and visitors. We do know anecdotally, Mercy San Juan generates a significant amount of visitors that don't have a place to stay here in the city, and that would be the closest place, so there's a need for that. And... place. So there's a need for that. And excitingly, it's the first project in Sunrise Tomorrow to really get its entitlements and kick off the redevelopment. So we really think that's going to be the first domino to fall and make some changes out on that site. So just in conclusion, the project's consistent with the general plan and the Sunrise Tomorrow Specific Plan. It's consistent with the IR. The project development agreement provides certainty for both us and the developer, and the project supports the city's numerous strategic goals. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here as well to answer any questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Presentation, go ahead.
What is, is there a list of the pre-approved brands, and what is the streamlined process that you offer?
So the streamlined process is, instead of going to, having to go to the City Council, it just goes to the Planning Commission if it's on one of those brands. There is a part of the development agreement lists the number of brands. It's exhibit F of the development agreement, if you'd like.
Some of them right now, the Embassy Suites, Holiday Inn.
Well, I'm just wondering, who defines, who defines that?
The city staff was, they put that together based on our experience.
Did you put a list together?
Director Huber is familiar with the hotel industry and provides some insight on that. But if it's not on the list, it can still be approved. It just would be an extra step.
I'm glad you're going to have several stars, because I tell you, my car broke down in Turlock, and I think I stayed at a half-star hotel. It was not nice.
No, we definitely want to meet the city and the community's expectations, so we have some provisions in there.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I have no speaker sheets for the public hearing.
I do have one written comment that was received.
Very well, go ahead.
So the written comment was received from Rick Hodgkins. He doesn't, he states, "I don't know whether to support option A, B, or C. I do have one question, though. Is the hotel going to go at the south end, right behind Red Robin? We also have a small strip mall where I think we could put housing or possibly the hotel. No matter what happens, where are people going to hang out when it's cold and wet outside and it's raining? We must remodel and renovate the mall so that current and future store is come inaccessible from the inside and outside. It's great to have a place to walk around on the outside. We also need the inside for characters like the Easter Bunny and Santa Claus to hang out, like in the center court. Also, let's get that fountain up and running again." And that concludes his comments.
Okay, I'm going to answer the applicable question of where it's going to be located. It's on the north end, near the intersection of Sunrise and Greenback, next to the hotel. Any other comments or public comments? Nope. Okay, going to close the public hearing. Any questions or comments regarding the item subsequent to the public hearing being closed?
I also want to make a comment to the people here and anyone who's watching is, you can access the Sunrise Tomorrow Plan online, and it is very thick, it's very beautiful. It's a great plan. You can see all the sections of the vision that the prior council had adopted. And so you know what we're looking at when we judge things against that plan. The same with had a plan for Auburn Boulevard, specific plan. When we have a specific plan, we have a specific vision in mind. And that's what Sunrise Marketplace is in part of this whole plan. So you can see the plan.
Specifically?
Specifically.
Okay, I do want to speak to the applicant, if they're here. There they are. I want to express my extreme gratitude for you bringing this. This is what's going to start that little snowball going that we need to happen. And we couldn't be happier to see this happening here, and just extremely appreciate the effort.
Well, we appreciate that very much. My name is David Bowie. I'm an attorney. I'm here on behalf of Antioch Street LP. Mr. Elwood is the principal for Antioch Street, and we're very excited about the possibility of putting something together. And the good news is that Mr. Elwood has experience, practical experience with hotels. And we've had some inquiries, and we want to really take this opportunity to complete the subdivision. We're in the process of doing some new studies and new appraisals with respect to that, and we expect to go out in the marketplace. So we're looking forward to putting, being the first developer to make the Sunrise Mall redevelopment a reality.
Excellent. And I don't know if you know this, will this project and this, all this thing we're doing with the parcels, will that turn over the landscaping area immediately on Greenback Lane side over to the hotel ownership, or will it remain in the?
That's going to kind of depend upon how we work all that out. At present, we don't really do the landscaping maintenance and so forth. And Casey brought to our attention there's a current problem with that, and that's something we're going to be looking into, because that is supposed to be taken care of by the common area through the process. But we'll pay attention to that. We'll take care of it.
I appreciate that tremendously, and I know that's getting into the weeds, literally, but it's, it's, it's just horrible. It's horrible, and it's not on you guys at all. It's horrible how this area is treated when it's the second busiest intersection in Sacramento County, and it's what people see and think of for Citrus Heights, and it looks the way it does. It's just...
Well, it's important to us also, because we intend on keeping the bank in that place for some time. So I'm a little surprised that the bank hadn't brought it to our attention previously.
If I was the bank manager, I'd buy a hose, and I'd water the grass myself. I really would.
I agree. Or at least pick up the telephone and call us and let us know.
Yeah, I'd be complaining. Anything from anybody else?
No, welcome.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very, very much. Okay, any motions? Can we take all three of these at one time?
They do require separate action, I'm sorry.
Okay, here we go. I move to determine the previously adopted Sunrise Tomorrow Specific Plan (EIR) is the appropriate environmental document for this project, and no further review is required.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Lopez Tap. Any questions or comments to the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve a tentative parcel map to allow the division of an existing 2.8-acre parcel into three parcels, 1.48 acres, 0.93 acres, and 0.38 acres in size subject to the findings and conditions contained in the staff report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Lopez Tap, seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Any comments or questions to the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Motion passed.
Can I do number three?
Yeah.
Of course.
I would move to introduce for first reading, read by title only, and waive the full reading of ordinance number 2024- as shown in exhibit B, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, adopting and approving the Sunrise Tomorrow Hotel Development Agreement.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Carpinski Costa, and seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Any comments or questions to the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Yay. All right, next item, please. Yes, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be in recess for five minutes.
Item number five, it's a resolution amending the salary table. Before that action is to take place, I'm supposed to read a oral statement. So my proposal is I'll read it, and we'll re-vote on it.
Okay.
So this item is a recommendation to approve a 3.8% cost of living adjustment to the salary range for the executive management classification of Administrative Services Director, Chief of Police, Community Development Director, Economic Development and Community Engagement Director, and General Services Director, and those changes would be effective as of July 14, 2024. So at this point, you can continue.
Any questions or comments regarding the item? Any motions?
Motion accept.
Second. Why'd you look at me?
It's been moved by Councilmember Lopez Tap, seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Any questions or comments to the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is Regular Calendar, item number 16. The subject is Citrus Heights Business Attraction Incentive Request for Dark Heart Brewing, Sylvan Corners. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the Citrus Heights Business Attraction Incentive Request for Dark Heart Brewing, Sylvan Corners.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels and City Council. I'm Megan Huber, Economic Development and Community Engagement Director. I'm really excited to present this agenda item to you because it's a culmination of really intensive city council strategic planning as it relates to Citrus Heights economic development, and about a year of planning and work. So starting off with a little bit of history, so we all know how we got here. In the strategic planning cycle from November 2022 to May 2023, council set a strategic objective to present, for staff to present to city council, program guidelines and recommendations to develop a grant program utilizing ARPA funding that advances economic development goals of effectively attracting and retaining target businesses and industries. For Citrus Heights in particular, some of the highest categories of requests that we hear from our communities are businesses that create community. So things like restaurants, breweries, and entertainment was the focus of this goal. So the Citrus Heights Business Attraction Incentive Program was created. It was established on March 23 unanimously by city council, and it is activated through this month of this year, so expiring at the end of June. It's designed specifically to attract new restaurants, breweries, and entertainment. Additional qualifications of the program include that a business has to have or be prepared to hire at least five employees, must have less than 100 employees, and a certain level of annual revenue and valuation, and that's to ensure that we're attracting small business. And then finally, it requires that the business is a destination amenity that contributes to community vibrancy to be able to achieve those target economic development goals. The council then set a strategic objective, the next strategic planning cycle, to effectively market the Business Attraction Incentive Program to generate leads. The program got a lot of great press and media. It certainly put our city on the map for proactive business attraction and economic development programming. You can see some highlights from the Sacramento Business Journal, KCRA III, and others. But really, what's most important when you create a program is getting the word out directly to potential businesses, so they know the resources available. And that really looks like direct outreach. So a final marker on our timeline, in January of this year, 2024, a Sacramento region brewery called Dark Heart Brewing posted on social media that they were unexpectedly closing due to circumstances beyond their control. And in economic development, it's really important to be proactive and to share information about programs and resources that are available. So staff reached out to make sure they had that information and that there was a program specifically to attract new breweries to Citrus Heights and provide resources to be able to do so. So at this point, I'd like to share a little bit about Dark Heart Brewing, who is now considering calling Citrus Heights home. I did my own due diligence as the economic developer to visit their previous site and make sure it was upheld to the standards of Citrus Heights and would create a potential destination amenity here.
Did you do tasting?
I felt it was my due diligence to ensure quality assurance. We have great taste here in Citrus Heights, and I wanted to make sure it was a good match. So these are photos from their previous location that was off of Auburn Boulevard, coincidentally enough, in unincorporated Sacramento County. Some highlights, it's a small business started by Rick and Cynthia Lee, who are in the audience this evening. They have been in operation for five years. They averaged 20 beers on tap, a huge variety, along with seltzer offerings. They're award-winning, which you can see from the photo on the top right. They have an extremely loyal following, which is really apparent from all of their social media activity, and when you go into the brewery, as you can see from the middle right-hand photo. And what I can tell you from working with them for the last six months is that they're small business owners who truly have a heart for community, which is really special. And to top it off, they have a 4.7-star Yelp rating, and some of the comments below show you just what makes them special. So once we started working together to hopefully leverage the Business Attraction Incentive Program as a potential resource, the next step was a really extensive site search to hopefully find them the right place. With breweries, especially breweries that do their own in-house production, 100% in-house production, there are some particular requirements. So as we were looking, we were looking for a minimum production area, a roll-up door is mandatory for the moving of all of those supplies, minimum column width, ceiling heights, that it was in the right local and regional market area, affordable rent rates is really important, since this is a small business. And then we were also looking for an opportunity for a patio in the future as well. So that was the wish list. And we found it at Sylvan Corners. The image on the right is the site plan of the Sylvan Corners property that is owned by Romeo and Juliet, Inc. We know it, heavily referenced as the old Goodwill site. So there on that lower right-hand corner is Goodwill, and then the orange shaded square portion is the identified location for Dark Heart Brewing. This is just another angle of what it could potentially look like and orient you to the building. And this is an example floor plan of how it would be utilized. In addition to selecting the site, we had to vet it completely and comprehensively, both in-house with city services, planning, building, public works, as well as with all of our external partners, including Sacramento Metro Fire District, Citrus Heights Water, Sacramento Area Sewer, et cetera, to make absolutely sure that this site was the one, it was viable, doable, and the location for Dark Heart Brewing in Citrus Heights. And I'm really happy to share that it checks all the boxes from a site selection perspective. And I really want to express gratitude to all of the internal and external partners that walked alongside us to figure all of that out. So the staff report provides total analysis in terms of how this request meets the goals of the Business Attraction Incentive Program. Just reviewing at a high level, making sure we're checking all of the boxes. This is a target business type, a brewery, which is specifically called out in the program guidelines. Dark Heart Brewing, Citrus Heights is prepared to hire five employees. They clearly have less than 100 employees, and as a small business, are well below those thresholds. There is a signed lease in place, which was a preference of the program guidelines as well. And a five-year cash flow analysis was provided to staff for comprehensive analysis. This is absolutely a destination amenity that provides community benefit. So checking all of the boxes from a program eligibility perspective. And I also just want to take a highlight, as the staff report did, to take a chance to highlight a couple of added bonuses, if you will, in addition to full eligibility. Relocation of an existing brewery rather than, say, a potential startup, they're bringing established success. So this lowers the risk of this investment, lowers the attraction costs needed. It's as much of a turnkey opportunity that would be possible. And they bring an immediate economic impact by moving in that will benefit the surrounding restaurants and other businesses. And then finally, the Sylvan Corners location is really important to Citrus Heights as a city, both from a historic perspective, but also from a development and future planning perspective. With everything that's laid out in our Auburn Boulevard Specific Plan, with the city's acquisition of the new Sylvan 11 acres on the corner, with all of the great businesses moving in, the addition of a brewery, this community use that will not only be an amenity for residents, but also bring new visitors and vitality to the area is a great recipe for success. Oh, and one more thing, and perhaps my favorite. In addition to being a fantastic brewery with great beer, Cynthia and Rick, as business owners, really bring a lens of marketing expertise and creating a destination as well. When they saw this site on Auburn Boulevard, I'm not being hyperbolic when I said they fell in love with it, and they recognized the potential of the Auburn Boulevard corridor as we do. And they are really looking forward to contributing and knitting that community fabric with all of us together. I want to take a quick moment to review the funding administration for this proposed grant agreement. It will happen in parts with conditions of approval. So once we receive, once we reach specific mile markers and are able to complete certain milestones, the next phase of funding will be released in parts to make sure we're achieving that success responsibly together. And it would happen in four phases that would be included in the eventual grant agreement. A draft was provided in the staff report attachment. So staff's recommendation is approval of this Business Attraction Incentive Request by Dark Heart Brewing, and I would like to take the opportunity at by Dark Heart Brewing, and I would like to take the opportunity at this point to invite owner Cynthia Lee up to the podium to say a few words.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and staff, thank you guys so much for the opportunity to come and speak tonight. We are the epitome of a small business. It's been an emotional time, a hard time for us to put our hardened souls into not just building, but you actually build a community, not just a brewery. We have people that think of us like family. We have been thought of as a, especially in the unincorporated area, we were kind of a community center. You know, people would bring their dogs. We've had celebrations of life. We've had weddings, which was fun. You know, we've had pirate gatherings and done Talk Like a Pirate Day that benefited the children's homes. We've made an impact in a lot of different ways. We are, in fact, a place without a home, and we're hoping that Citrus Heights would consider us, and we just really appreciate the opportunity. My husband and I are both BJCP Beer Judges. It was harder than my real estate license, harder than my dental boards. It's the best unpaid job ever, and one of the things that you don't realize when you do that, yes, you get to have great beer, you get to judge state fair, you get to do all these really cool things, but they don't really tell you that you're building community and friendships and things that are going to impact your world in a whole new light. There was one quote that I noticed on the website. I did a lot of reading and a lot of soul searching when we thought we were going to close and we were going to move, and we were talking about, there was a book, Becoming the City of Citrus Heights, and one of the favorite quotes is, "Once in a while, ordinary people get to do extraordinary things, and other times, ordinary people are swept up by a tide of events, and it enables them to do the impossible." That's what we're hoping that we have the opportunity to do with you guys, is to change the fabric of our community and make a difference, and we just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Question. Tell me about the seltzer water.
It's awesome. You know, it's really fun for, we can only sell what we produce, and there are different licenses. Wineries have a different license than we do, so the seltzers are fantastic. It's a gluten-free product. It's basically sugar water and champagne yeast. It makes about a 5% product. We keep it at a low volume, and then you're able to make these craft cocktails with it. So we have very high-end, I don't know if anybody's had a White Claw. If I'd ever had one, we never would have made a seltzer. Ours are a very delicious craft cocktail. We use a high-end product from a very small company that's becoming bigger, they're like we are, called Amaretty, and they're delicious. So we have an Appletini, we have some of these other flavors, strawberry lemonade that is just bomb, and that'll be next week's drink because it's going to be 116. But we have a lot of variety, so for somebody that maybe doesn't do beer or is gluten intolerant, it gives them an option to be able to enjoy. We also make sure that we have some non-alcoholic options on there as well, so.
All right. Any questions, comments for the applicant?
So do you serve food or are you simply a tasting room?
So we're a tasting room. One of the cool things, and I do come from a Chamber of Commerce Convention and Visitors' Bureau background originally, we're doing a concept where all of the restaurants around us, so we have Gilberto's, Ciro's, which I'm going to need a treadmill after that place, it's so good, Rock Hard Burgers in Brew, Wonderful Chinese, there's the sushi places across the way as well. What we want to be able to do is to have a QR system where if you come in and you're meeting after work and you want to relax, we want to serve responsibly in a tasting room, you're able to QR code, they'll deliver it right to the taproom. So everybody is working together, everybody's getting fed. They're able to increase their business without having to do anything else by at least 25% is what we've figured out. So in this economy right now with the hit that hospitality has taken, I think that's a huge, that's a big economic impact for the area.
I really appreciate that approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just super excited. My husband and I can't wait.
Me too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything for Megan before I call up the one public speaker that I have? Nothing right now? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call up Janice Jaycox.
The last time I spoke to the city council was last year about Humley. It seems like all I'm interested in is beer, but it's not the case, honest. I think this is a wonderful thing, and it's a great place for it. I live very close. I'm walking distance, which is a good thing.
Lucky you.
I had a couple of questions, but I wanted to make comment first. Because of Humley, in fact, on the way over here this evening, I decided to stop in Humley and ask them what they thought about having competition quite so close. I mean, it's a quarter of a mi, less than a quarter of a mile, five-minute walk if you make the signal. And I drove through the parking lot, and Humley was so crowded, there was no parking spaces, so I couldn't stop and go in and ask them. So it's great. I think it might even be a catalyst to get a baby sort of brew pub brewery district, kind of like what's around Sunrise and Folsom, there's three or four to get, you know, within a half a mile of each other. Maybe we could encourage that or bring in other restaurants because there's, except I do hate using QR codes. I'm weird that way. I don't use QR codes. My phone is too small and I can't read them, but that's okay. And I've been in once, long time ago, when you guys first opened, but not since because I live too far away. But I just had a question because I know there are small businesses that we're attracting into, and we want to do that, but $86,000 is a lot of money, and there is competition really, really close. And I was just wondering, curious more than anything, whether we had any incentives for Humley, or did they have to bear all of those expenses themselves, whereas we're helping these folks who, they probably have a symbiotic relationship, but I just think it might be, it looks like maybe the city is putting their thumb on the scale a little bit. Not that I'm against the project, I just have a question.
Megan, can you answer that?
I'd be happy to answer that. The City of Citrus Heights offers multiple economic development grants for businesses, and I'm really happy to report Humley took advantage of our sign improvement program. So they did receive economic development assistance.
Thank you. And since it was brought up, yeah, these are tax dollars, bottom line, these are tax dollars, and so I'm leery of taking tax dollars to support private ventures. But in this case, obviously, we will be investing in a business that will return money to us in the form of sales tax, and those being tax dollars. And so to me, it's a no-brainer. It's something that we should be supporting. It will bring, again, not only tax dollars to Citrus Heights, but it will bring people, and it will bring business, and I mean, Ciro's has got to be like off-the-chart excited, and then other things can happen hopefully in that area that are just waiting to be developed. And so it's a win for Citrus Heights. I definitely think it's a win for Dark Heart. It's a win for Tom Romeo and who owns all that area over there, and it's what we need as a city to be successful. So that's where I'm at. Any questions, any comments, anything else? Go ahead.
Make a comment. Is that, I was so impressed with the owner's executive summary as you read it and the various way they do connect to the community that I was excited just reading their application, I think it was. And I don't know if John's still here. We went to a NUSA conference in Eugene, Oregon, which you might call Brewjean because there's so much breweries that we got on a little trolley and we bicycle. Tim Schaefer had a broken ankle, so he had to sit over the wheel well because he couldn't pedal, and we all pedaled with our feet and went to about 25 breweries in one night. It was cool. So I think it's cool to have it in our city. So I think it's unique.
And hopefully, that area won't turn into the likes of Nashville, where I just visited last week and paid $9 for a bottle of Coors Light.
Oh, no. It's a dry city, that's why.
And so, okay, any motions?
Move approval. It might be written down better than here.
That's enough. I'll second it. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Carpentis Costa, seconded by Mayor Brett Daniels. Any questions or comments to the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Get to work. Thank you very much. Motion passes.
I want to try that seltzer.
Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar item number 17. The subject is Fiscal Years 23, 24, and 24, 25 Mid-Cycle Budget Review: Financial Forecast Update and Appropriations Limit for Fiscal Year 24, 25. The recommendation is to review the updated expenditure and expenditure projections, review the updated 10-year financial forecast, adopt a resolution approving amendments to the fiscal year 24, 25 budget, and adopt a resolution establishing an appropriation limit for fiscal year 24, 25.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Tonight, we bring to you the mid-cycle budget overview and adoption of the recommended budget adjustments. What we're going to do first is we're going to start out with our 23, 24 fiscal year, 23, 24 projections, and most of those are as of the end of May. And then we'll go through the fiscal year 24, 25 budget adjustment requests, followed by our, again, appropriations limit. And just to mention that all items here in front of you tonight were reviewed by the Finance Committee on June 11, 2024. What I do want to do before we dive into those items is just review, give an overview of our general fund revenue. As mentioned on some of the items before us tonight, you can see that our income opportunities or revenue opportunities are limited. Majority of them, as mentioned by Mayor Daniels, is from sales tax, which is about 31%. Then the next highest after that is intergovernmental revenue, so that's mostly our motor vehicle in lieu, and then property tax or other, kind of makes up of a bunch of things combined, but property tax after that. So our general fund revenue sales tax, for every 7.75 cents state tax that is charged, the city is receiving about 1.01 cents of that. So even with that sales tax being our highest revenue source, it is about a penny for every seven cents that we do receive, right? And going into our property tax, this is a good picture here that also basically breaks down for every dollar of property tax we receive. So for each of our residents or each of our property owners that do pay for their property tax, the city only gets about 8.4 cents of that property tax dollar. The rest of it is dispersed amongst other agencies. You have the county there, San Juan School District, Sunrise Park, SAC Metro Fire, to name a few. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to our finance manager, Alberto Preciado, to review the budget projections for 23, 24.
Good evening, Council. If Director Talwar will indulge me for just a moment, I just want to say with all the exciting things on the docket for this evening, I'm very thrilled to be able to bring this guy home with our budget projections and, you know, end-of-year projections. So hope you're excited, as excited as I am. Okay, so what's just before you is a summary of our general fund projected revenues and expenditures. For our revenues, we are projecting about $44.6 million, which is a little bit above $700,000 better than we anticipated at our last budget adjustment. For our expenditures, we are projecting about $38.98 million in expenditures, which is also better than we had anticipated by almost $960,000, a little more than $950,000. This would result in a better-than-anticipated operating surplus of $1.7 million, so that would put us at $5.6 million, 5.7, excuse me, of an operating surplus for the year. So let's get into the details, what makes up those variances. Starting with our revenues, we are anticipating slightly higher-than-anticipated revenue in our taxes and franchise fees. That is in property tax, where we're anticipating $7.46 million in property tax revenue. For our licenses and permits, we're expecting those to exceed the budgeted amounts by about $427,000. On our fines and forfeiture side, we're looking at $48,000 better than anticipated red light camera fines. On our intergovernmental revenue, as Director Talwar mentioned, the motor vehicle in lieu, property tax in lieu, that's going to project it to be about $84,000, a little bit better than budget. And then our investment revenue, this is where we're really excited, higher interest rates are looking to increase our investment revenue by about $1.2 million higher than anticipated. So that is a good, very good result for the city. And finally, for the revenues, our other revenues are looking at about $154,000 over the budgeted amount. What is in there is rebates and convenience fees principally, as well as other smaller And now on the expenditure side, more good news. We are looking at about $500,000 in savings and salary and benefits. That is a result of savings from staff turnover and position vacancies, so that there's savings there. And then another almost million dollars from our other operating expenditures. This is primarily from our CalPERS unfunded actuarial liability payment, which came in significantly lower than we had initially budgeted. And additionally, there are savings overall from other departments exercising fiscal prudence and cutting costs where we can without sacrificing services or quality.
So with that, we're going to move forward to our mid-cycle budget adjustment request for the upcoming year of fiscal year 24, 25. Looking ahead at our revenues and comparing it to our original budget, we are forecasting about $45.5 million, so that's about $945,000 more than what we had budgeted about May of last year, May of 2023. The expenditures, there is an additional $1.25 million request. That puts us at about $45 million for expenditures. So the net impact of the proposed adjustment is about a $300,000 shortfall, which then we are forecasting about a $500,000 impact to our general fund additional revenues. So just reviewing our taxes and franchises, sales tax, as we mentioned, is our largest level. There is, as you may recall, back in February of this year, during mid-year budget, we did have an adjustment downwards that was projected by our consultants, and that's due to the fact of the change in economy and purchasing practices by, excuse me, the community. So with that, this trend that you're seeing here, the decrease of $584,000 is basically a level off of that from that adjustment that we did, and forecasting it also for the next fiscal year. Property tax revenue is also a slight decrease, and then the TOT, Trans occupancy tax, is a small increase of about $17,000. The intergovernmental, we have the motor vehicle in lieu fees with a slight decrease of about $32,000. And use of money, as Alberto mentioned, we do have our investment revenues. We anticipate that the interest rates will remain as they have been, and will continue to have a positive impact on our investment revenues. So we are keeping or also proposing that in a similar fashion as we did for the adjustment in February of about an additional $1.1 million. And within other revenues, we are projecting an additional $300,000, and what that is, is that we have an increase in our insurance liability that is being projected for next year, and the pool allows us to utilize basically a benefit where we where we can, uh, we have a sum of rebates that we can use, and we figured we can use that rebate to, towards the increase of our insurance expenditures. So it's a one-to-one offset there. Uh, moving forward with our expenditure projections, um, within salary and benefits, um, we have about a $216,000 impact, uh, that is inclusive of the, um, slight COLA adjustment. And then we have a need for additional facility attendance at the community centers. That's great to see after COVID that there's been an uptick in events and the need for more, uh, facility attendance. And then also included in that is police officer reserves. On the operating side, um, on the non, that's non-salary and benefits, there is about a 1 point, uh, about a $1 million, uh, request. So within that, if you look at, towards the Administrative Services Department, Finance, uh, there is about a $68,000 increase, and that's majority for increase in auditor and consultant fees. And the biggest part of that is, uh, the Finance Department was tasked with a strategic planning objective of the cost allocation plan study. So that's what's included predominantly in there. Risk management, and that is, that speaks to the $300,000 that, um, I spoke to on the rebate that we will utilize. So the increase, the net is zero, uh, for the general liability insurance. And then the additional 7,000 is the cost of the load-bearing vests that have gone up. Within IT, as we are seeing across most of, uh, software licensing is going up, so that's the majority of the increase there. And in non-departmental, we have about a $45,000 for payment on property tax on a potential property acquisition. Um, in the Police Department, um, for animal control, there is a $261,000 increase. And that's mainly because, as you've heard, Placer County is discontinuing their service, uh, for, um, for the, to the city. And we will be transitioning to the Bradshaw Animal Shelter. So the total expenditures for the year is about 500,000, which is why we're almost needing to double our request, or, or what our expenditures are. Um, and then 93,000 we have there, which is inclusive of software support, additional training, and, uh, the training for, uh, weekly K-9 training as well. Community Development Department, we have about $20,000 that was reallocated from '23 to '24 for their five-year consolidated plan. And, uh, Planning Commission, that's about a $2,000 increase due to the anticipation of four new planning commissioners to be able to send them to the, uh, Planning Commissioners Academy. And for building, $15,000 to cover the additional consulting needs for plan review of projects. It's all those good projects we're seeing coming through. In Economic Development, Community Engagement, uh, we have about $60,000, uh, requests for the Grant Assistant Consultant. We've seen, uh, quite a, it's been quite fruitful for our city. Um, and, uh, for General Services Department, uh, at the community center, about $32,000 increase. And that's mainly for maintenance costs. We have our carpet cleaning, um, kitchen and maintenance equipment, and there has been an increase in utilities as well. And then at the City Manager's Office, we have about a $4,000 increase in, uh, the council, and that's for meeting and conferences to continue the professional development opportunities. And the City Attorney, we have about 40, uh, excuse me, 54,000, um, and due to contract amendments. And, uh, election, uh, we have seen that the county has increased their election fees, so that's about $3,000 there.
Onto our American Rescue Plan Act funds. Uh, as Council recalls, the city received $15.7 million in ARPA funding. To date, the City Council has appropriated $14 million of that funding, uh, 12.2 million of which has been committed. Currently, approximately $3.5 million of the ARPA funding is still available and will need to be obligated by December 2024. This amount has not been reflected in the '24, '25 budget. It's also not been reflected in our forecast. Staff will be back, uh, at the August meeting to provide a detailed update and a plan of action, uh, recommended for those funds. Moving on to our appropriations limit, the appropriations or GAN limit, uh, as it is affectionately called, uh, was enacted by Propositions 13 and then revised by Proposition 111, uh, and set limits on how much of general fund revenue the city could spend in a given year. These, uh, this limit is adjusted annually by a, a couple of factors, including the Cost of Living Adjustment Index for the state and, uh, the county or the city's population adjustment. For fiscal year 24, 25, this adjusted limit is $70.1 million. Of the general fund revenue, approximately $39.5 million is subject to this limit, leaving an approximate appropriation capacity of $30.6 million, or 43% of the limit. Moving on to our financial forecast, uh, I am going to be focusing on our fiscal year 23, 24 June forecast. That is that column, uh, right before the series of blue columns. Uh, as I noted in an earlier slide, our net operating position is forecasted to be about $5.7 million for the year, resulting in a reserve balance of approximately $26.8 million.
And then, uh, looking, highlighting here in the blue section, we've got our '24, '25, and we have our mid-cycle amendment request here. And you can see, uh, between the revenues and operating expenditures, our net operating position is about 500,000, um, including still, um, maintaining our street repairs, leaving an ending reserve balance of about $23.3 million. So that is well over the, um, City Council policy of 17%. So with that, we have a recommendation, uh, in front of you tonight to adopt a resolution of the City of, Count, Resolution of the City Council of City of Citrus Heights, California approving amendments to fiscal year 24, 25 budget, and also the resolution of the City of Citrus Heights, California establishing an appropriation limit for fiscal year 24, 25. We'll take any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments? Nothing, nothing, nothing? Anything, Vice Mayor? Okay, well.
I'm always amazed at how the numbers work.
Uh, just incredible news, just incredible news. If I understood all of that right, basically what you said was, uh, we had a budget, and now we project it to be, uh, that we'll have another 1.7 million, um, uh, over that period.
For the end of this fiscal year.
Fiscal year, which just is incredible. Um, and a healthy reserve, um, and at the same time, we're watching cities around us want to increase their sales tax, which just baffles me. Okay, any, uh, uh, motions? Do we need a motion? Yep. Adopt a resolution. Who wants to go?
I move we adopt resolution 2024, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, approving amendments to the fiscal year 24, 25 budget.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa and seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Any questions or comments to the motion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Got another one.
I move we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, establishing an appropriation limit for the fiscal year 24, 25.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa. Any questions or comments to the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
The next item is Department Reports, number 18. The subject is fireworks enforcement and operations plan by the Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Lieutenant Ken Lewis with the Police Department. With me tonight is my partner, Police Service Manager Tiffany Campbell. And tonight, we're here to provide you with information for the upcoming Fourth of July holiday. With your permission, we'll begin. As we gear up for the upcoming Fourth of July holiday, our preparation involves a series of internal and regional meetings. Internally, we focused on staffing, technology, and information sharing. In addition to our internal meetings, our department attended Regional Firework Task Force meetings. These meetings included our regional partners for information sharing, such as what worked last year and any new year, or new ideas for this year. As part of our preparation for this year, we have enhanced our animal services, which Manager Campbell will speak about here shortly. As we approach the Fourth of July, it's crucial to educate the public through various channels, leveraging our social media, to disseminate safety guidelines and promote reasonable celebration. Additionally, we have sent out information letters to areas that have had more instances of illegal fireworks. By doing this, we can raise awareness and encourage adherence to local fire laws. Lastly, our department does have an amnesty program where illegal fireworks can be taken to the Police Department at no questions. Now for the reporting. To report any illegal fireworks, community, community members are encouraged to utilize several convenient methods. One option is to contact our non-emergency police line. Additionally, residents can use our See Click Fix app, or they can go to our website at www.citrusheights.pd.net. Now, obviously, the enforcement part, nobody likes this. Due to the potential hazards illegal fireworks pose, our department will have a zero-tolerance approach should we come across them. We will have additional patrol personnel whose focus will be illegal fireworks or illegal firework enforcement for the third and the fourth. Additionally, SAC Metro will have arson investigators in our area should we request them. Now to speak about our enhanced animal services, Manager Campbell.
Hi, thank you. I know most of us are well aware of the loud noises and the fear that the fireworks can cause our furry friends. And because of that, added this year, uh, Citrus Heights Animal Services, we will have our two dedicated animal services officers working overtime during the Stars and Stripes event, and also on July 3rd and 4th. We have also added a dedicated community volunteer who will be armed with a chip reader and will help our animal services officers with returning, uh, local pets that are stray and really enforce that reunification within our city. Um, as well, we have, uh, a limited number of temporary holding kennels at the PD. And should a citizen find a local stray animal, they can contact the PD, and we will have our volunteer assist along with our animal services officers. And the kennel itself at the PD would be used for short-term holding, so a citizen could come to the department and pick up their animal if we identify them by their chip. And, uh, we're pretty excited about that. And then lastly, we also secure temporary kenneling for our animal services officers to place those animals where their owner may not have been identified. And so we will get a, a short period of time to try to continue on that reunification of the pets. Um, and tonight, what we are asking is for our public to plan ahead and to make sure their pets are chipped. Um, and by planning ahead, they could also pro, provide a quiet and comfortable safe haven for their furry friends or their family pets. And, uh, of course, call on us on our non-emergency line should you need to reach our animal services officers. If it's an emergency, we obviously ask you, call 911.
In closing, as we approach the Fourth of July celebrations, it is crucial to emphasize our community's commitment to safety and reasonable celebration, and we want to wish everybody safe and sane Independence Day. Thank you.
Okay, any comments, questions of staff? Go ahead.
How many citations did we issue last year?
Last year, we had three, three social posters.
Your microphone.
Sorry about that, last year we had three.
Does the Nail'em app do any good? You know, because they advertise that in the county and through Metro Fire, that they have that app called Nail'em?
Yeah, they, they did try that, there was a lot of issues, uh, with that app.
Doesn't work.
So it didn't work that well.
Don't, don't download it.
Correct.
Better off with See Click Fix.
See Click Fix, yes, ma'am.
And my last question is, is there an opportunity for, like, I own two giant kennels, you know, for dogs? If there an opportunity, if I hose them down and wash them out, and you want to use them, just, and spray them?
I would love that.
Would you like to have a couple that maybe some of the other people can volunteer their large dog kennels? You got a place to put them?
We do have a place to put them. Would, if you would like them back, we could also return them when we're done after the holiday.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we want them back, because they're my dog kennels, but.
No problem.
But temporarily use them, where, you know, they, they come apart with screws, the big giant ones?
That would be wonderful. That would contribute to the number that we have, giving us seven.
Okay, and if anyone else has any large dog kennels and?
I think seven would probably take us to capacity for what we could manage in the space that we have with the staff that we have. So we don't want to be overwhelmed, but thank you so much for that offer.
I'll bring you over to you tomorrow, okay.
Okay, I'll be on duty, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Yeah, I, I'm just going to say that, um, oh, I got a speaker sheet, let me do that real quick. Janice Jacobs, come on.
I, I didn't plan to talk on this item, but I stuck around, I remembered it was on the agenda. I know the effort, it concentrates on the third and the fourth. What are you doing about illegal fireworks? We're a week ahead of the fourth, and I hear them every night. But it's not even just the illegal fireworks, I mean, there are fireworks everywhere now. Uh, is there any kind of, uh, enforcement now for illegal? And it probably is year-round for the illegal, but even for the legal, that, the legal, safe and sane ones, it's very annoying for 11 o'clock on the 26th of June at night.
There is a timeframe of when they can start and then stop, right, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
A date, I don't know, we don't have that date available?
July 4th.
Yes, there is a date, yes, I don't have the actual date. We are turning on our See Click Fix on the 28th, uh, this month. And you can always call, you could always, and we actually encourage you, please call us, so we can come out there if there is an issue going on at that particular time. We can do a lot of information gathering for them, we can, you know, provide them with information. And if we need to, if we need to take the necessary steps to cite them, we could also look into that as well.
The last couple of nights, I haven't been hearing, like, M-80s or, you know, cherry bombs or the loud ones. But fireworks, which I'm guessing might be the safe and sane ones, going off all over the neighborhood. And we're, they're going to run out by the fourth.
Did you guys get a copy of the letter that we all got from Dennis Ravel, who's the Public Relations for TNT, talking about the illegal fireworks in Nevada and how they're working on a, a group that they can put together and pass the legislation interstate so that they can stop the, I guess, Frumpf, Harumpf, Frumpf? Frumpf has a bunch of illegal stores and, did you get that email, you want to send it over?
Yes, we, we were provided that email, I glanced at, yeah.
Is that something we're going to work on for next year?
It's always something we can look at, yes.
Do we have to tell them to look at it?
No, no, they can do it, they'll do it. Yeah, I, I guess these will be my comments, you know, you got to be a special kind of stupid to, um, to light off these things that blow up in the middle of the night, um, you know, and I get, on, on, on the fourth, I get it. You know, that's what we are, we're a nation of fireworks, blow them up. But I don't understand the fool that blows up something at, you know, 3:00 in the morning on July 1st. You know, it, it's just somebody who, I guess, is bent on making sure they disturb neighbors and stuff like that. And I, I've got one of those neighbors, if I'm ever able to determine which one it is, I'll be calling, uh, because, uh, it happens. Uh, and it's just unfortunate, it's very, very unfortunate. And to the comments, you know, can you catch them? You know, almost impossible, it, it really is almost impossible. And it really, it takes probably the person that lives immediately next door to the person, you know, making the call and say, hey, it's my neighbor. You know, and, and again, I, I can, I open my windows in the back and I try to figure it out, and the sounds are bouncing off all the houses, I can't figure it out. And so, um, it, it, it's, it takes that, because it's so isolated and usually so quick and it's over with. It's done, it's done, and so, um, it is what it is. And, uh, um, hopefully people will, will use their common sense and, and do things at the right time of the day and, and respectful of other people. We can only hope, right? Okay, any other questions or comments? I think that's it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item is City Manager Items.
Well, good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, Ashvina, your City Manager. And I do have, we've got a lot going on right now. So, um, we do have quite a few updates here for you. So if we can go to the slide, uh, we are changing our meetings. The next meeting, uh, will be on a Wednesday. So we've been currently having our meetings on the 2nd and 4th Thursday of the month, starting July, uh, July 10th will be our first one on a Wednesday, but we're switching to the 2nd and 4th Wednesdays of every month at 6:00 PM. the 2nd and 4th Wednesdays of every month at 6:00 PM. So we've been publicizing this on our webpage, social media, as well as other media outlets, and it'll start next month. Lot of construction activity. In addition, all the striping that you've seen, and I know you had an update at the last meeting, team has been very busy on striping efforts all across the city. But in addition to that, we have some major infrastructure projects that have started or underway. Along San Juan Avenue, between Madison and Greenback on the southern end, we've got our contractor mobilized, and they've started construction. They've been doing some excavation work out there that you're seeing now, as well as some millenials. But this project will be a complete streets project, and the council's very familiar with it. But it's going to provide safe sidewalk bicycle access and also a freshly paved roadway from Madison to Spicer. And then the team has also been working actively, and there is a proposed federal appropriation for the second phase of that project that would go from Spicer to Greenback. So we're very excited about that. And you can see here some of the active construction activity that's underway out there. Dewey Drive, millenial fill work. These are the structural repairs to problematic potholes where you're actually cutting out and rebuilding that section and then doing a large pavement patch over the top of it. That work's been being performed. Dewey Drive in Van Marren ahead of the resurfacing project, so we don't have reoccurring potholes on new pavement sections. That work started on June 24th, and it's expected to be completed by Friday, July 12th. And then the Dewey-Van Marren project, where it'd be the resurfacing project, that's scheduled for award and contract in July and construction to begin in August. So more to come for major construction activity at Dewey and Van Marren. And here's some example of, when I was speaking to the millenials, it's not a cold patch pothole. It is a very significant repair that you can see there, and that's going to be an investment for the future when we can ensure the structural integrity of that roadway for generations to come.
So Ash, on that, I just want to make sure people understand, make sure I understand. We're digging it down deeper, right? And taking care of what the issue is deeper.
Yeah.
And then later, we'll come back and take, there'll obviously be something that comes off of that, and the whole road will be resurfaced.
Yeah, so you can see here, you can see where that area was hogged out, and you're actually kind of redoing the base. And you can see this middle section here, that's just before they do that pavement patch that you can see on the far right. So it is a rebuild of that section and then a full patch overlay. And then that sets a stage for the other areas that don't require that level of repair to come in and have the entire street resurfaced, and then you'll end up with...
And I just wanted people to understand, yeah, that they're going to see this work, and they're going to think like, well, they, why'd they do that? You know, they're going to think they, we fixed it already, but we're going to be coming in to actually do the top layer, we'll call it the icing on the cake.
That's right. This is part of the pavement strategies to go ahead and repair our sections that need the repair. And there will, for instance, Dewey in Van Marren, that will be the resurfaced street. And you'll see as part of the pavement strategy, you know, we had a crack seal item on the consent calendar, there's a number of different pavement treating methods that we're going to be doing to execute the three-year strategy. And so there will be other patchwork that you'll see in the city that's prepping up for that three-year strategy as well. So there's a lot that goes into it.
Question. I suspect that if it's that, that this whole street is going to be non-functioning. So are we making provisions for an ambulance to have to get to Mercy Hospital and get around this without delay?
We have traffic control plans that are vetted out with our team to make sure that emergency services still have access to critical infrastructure.
Yeah, we're not shutting off any road in any specific direction all of the time.
But it may take them a while to get around it.
Yeah, they're aggressive enough.
Oncoming vehicles.
Tell them to go faster.
And we, moving on to another item here, we have our Stars and Stripes celebration. Very excited about this. Last year, the community had a lot of fun right here, just behind City Hall at Van Marren Park. But this Saturday, at 6:00 PM, the good times get started. Terrific family event, great for people of all ages, and we'll have food trucks out there, a nice cool lawn to sit on, some live band, pop fiction. Director Caves provided some video links, and they look like they're going to be a lot of fun. Looking forward to that. They'll be starting at 7:00 PM, and then the fireworks show will begin at 9:45. We have several different parking areas that you can see listed here. Similar to last year, we'll have these remote parking lots that kind of surround the site. And then for those that maybe would like some assistance to the site, we will continue the golf cart shuttles that you saw last year. So we'll continue to do that. And of course, people are welcome to walk right in, too. So you can see the flyer, of course, more information on our website, and we'll continue to speak to this on post, social media. I'm very appreciative of our entire team that's been involved with the planning efforts around this. There was a item that was raised here, I believe, I believe our vice mayor raised it, and the council asked us to look and follow this Senate bill that was being proposed, 1164 by Senator Newman. This was going to exclude taxation on accessory dwelling units. And so with that, you know, that is a threat to local revenue sources, and there's opportunities there where maybe somebody builds a bigger unit and kind of gets an exemption and kind of plays a game, so to speak. So council had a lot of concern. We looked into it from a staff. We had a concern. The League of Cities had a lot of concern around it. And actually, Councilmember Schaefer was going to go speak at a committee hearing. The senator that proposed the bill has pulled the bill. So I just wanted to give an update on that. And that, I think in large part is around the lobbying efforts and the voices of opposition to that, including our own. And Citrus Heights PD celebrated on June 26th their 18th anniversary, and there was a kind of a nice little surprise gathering for staff at the PD parking lot, where the Citrus Heights Police Foundation worked with Raising Canes and Kona Ice to put a little small barbecue on for the staff. And the foundation was also presented with a very nice plaque as well. And so a great celebration, 18 years of CHPD occurred on June 26th, and kind of a nice small gathering there.
We didn't get an invite.
It was a, something that came together was more of a staff-focused item, but it kind of grew a little bit.
Well, then happy anniversary, CHPD.
Yeah, yeah. But we'll definitely, I tell you what, when it's the 20-year, I'm sure we're going to have a lot of fun. I'm sure we're going to have a lot of fun, and we'll make sure the council's out there. So, and I know you're there in spirit, and I made sure to say some comments on your behalf. And that concludes my updates.
Ash, we're about to enter a one-week spell of 103 to 110 degree weather. Can you comment on cooling centers?
Yeah, absolutely. Anytime that we have a forecast of 100 degrees or greater, we have, the region has a number of different cooling centers. But here in Citrus Heights, we have our police lobby that will remain open and available to the public until 8:00 PM as a cooling center here in Citrus Heights.
I would like us to maybe consider a little something better than that this time around, because I'm looking at the weather thing right now. And Saturday and Sundays, 106, 103 after 110s and 1... That's not good. And so maybe, I know we've kind of pulled back from doing a bigger thing before because we didn't get very many people there. So maybe we want to put some thought into that about...
I think we will monitor that situation. If we start having greater demand than what we can hold, we would absolutely look...
Some of the churches stay open for that reason?
Yeah, there's a lot of opportunities for cooled space, I'd say, just within the region as well as here in Citrus Heights. We have, as I've shared before with the council, we have not had a ton of demand at our cooling centers. But I can tell you, if we did have a demand that was increasing beyond our capacity, we'd absolutely could look to expand that. But that's something we could track closely.
And, you know, I don't know how deep we want to get into that, but, you know, it's not a big city, but when it's 109, 110 outside, it's a long walk from the mall to the police station to cool off. I don't know if we want to maybe look at some shuttle-type stuff. Again, these are extreme temperatures. This is three days of 109, 110, and 109. So just very concerned about what might be going on. Something maybe we can look at. Anything else for the city manager? Next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anything? Go ahead.
I'd like to know if there's a second, that we could address as a council how to deal with the landscape and lighting assessment districts that are running us into red that people have not been wanting to pay for. And so we have been subsidizing it, and I'm just wondering if we should, apparently, we need council to give direction to staff on how to narrow that gap. It's cost over $100,000 or more over the years, and every year, it's 20-some thousand dollars that we're subsidizing.
Yeah, I'll second that. Go ahead. Okay, anything else? Next item, please.
There are no further items.
Okay. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.